Good morning. Our meeting is now called to order. Any items from the public? Enough. The motion to approve the agenda.
No move.
Second.
They're moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ayes have it. Only purchase of the law. Any questions for Tracy?
If there's any concern about besides your first quarter loan payments on all your debt service are in there, that's why it's so large.
Yeah, the, uh, the number of transactions seem to be a little bit smaller, but the bottom line was larger. Okay. There are no internal budget revisions this week, Mr. White?
No, sir.
That's a good thing. Change of status. Hiring recommendation received from the Honorable Larry Hess, Assessor for Cary Whittington, as a personal property clerk with an annual salary of thirty-five thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars. That's effective start date to be determined. Hiring recommendation received from the Honorable Rob Blair, Sheriff for Jackson Martin, as a Deputy Sheriff with an annual salary of fifty-seven thousand, four hundred and sixty-six, effective eleven, three, twenty-five. Hiring recommendation received from the Honorable Rob Blair, Sheriff for Caleb Atkinson, as a Deputy Sheriff with an annual salary of fifty-seven thousand, four hundred and sixty-six dollars, effective eleven, three, twenty-five. Hiring recommendation received from Tim Zier, Director of Community Corrections, for Lindsey Mann, as a Case Manager with an annual salary of fifty thousand, six hundred and seventy-six dollars. That's effective eleven, ten, twenty-five. Change of status received from Martin Roberts, Fire Chief for Coal Canaan, or Firefighter One, from a grade increase for years of service, to Firefighter Two, with a salary change from sixty-two thousand, five hundred and fifty-one to sixty-four thousand, six hundred and two dollars. That's effective eleven, one, twenty-five. Change of status received from Jennifer Swisher, Director of Emergency Communications, for Cynthia Bell, Senior Telecommunicator, with a step increase for years of service, with salary change of sixty thousand, twenty-four dollars to sixty-one thousand, eight hundred and twenty-five dollars. That's effective eleven, eight, twenty-five. Change of status received from Jennifer Swisher, Director of Emergency Communications, for Delaney Lyson, Senior Telecommunicator, with a step increase for years of service, with a salary change from sixty thousand, twenty-four dollars to sixty-one thousand, eight hundred and twenty-five dollars, effective eleven, eight, twenty-five. Change of status received from Jennifer Swisher, Director of Emergency Communications, for Melissa Holtzall, Supervisor, with a step increase for years of service, with a salary change from sixty-three thousand, twenty-five dollars to sixty-four thousand, nine hundred and sixteen dollars. That's effective eleven, eight, twenty-five. Change of status received from Jennifer Swisher, Director of Emergency Communications, for Bryce Turner, Telecommunicator Trainee, with a grade increase of Telecommunicator One, with a salary change from forty-eight thousand, six hundred and seventy-four dollars to fifty-two thousand, eight hundred and fifty-eight dollars. That's effective ten, twenty-five, twenty-five. Letter of resignation received from the Honorable Joe Kenzer, Prosecuting Attorney, for Christian Baker, Assistant Prosecuting Attorney. That's effective ten, twenty-eight, twenty-five. Uh, we can leave those minutes of October sixteenth and the consent agenda. This time I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
No move, Mr. President.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ayes have it. Thank you. Next up, Larry Hess, our Assessor. Good morning, sir.
Good morning.
Good morning, sir.
I got, uh, just a few, uh, exonerations this week. First one I have would be a taxpayer error. I have two of them actually. And these are the first offense, uh, so we're giving them a break on this one here. And those two totaled up to a hundred and sixteen dollars and twenty-two cents.
Okay. I need a motion to approve the, the two personal tax exoneration due to taxpayer error.
No move.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ayes have it.
Good. Thank you. I do have, uh, eight total office error of personal property we had to bring to you for correction for the reasons that's listed there. They, those eight totaled up to eight hundred and sixty dollars and twenty-one cents.
I need a motion to approve the eight personal tax exemptions as presented by the Assessor.
No move.
Second.
They're moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ayes have it.
Good. Thank you. I do have one for real estate, uh, office error. And if, we had the wrong tax class on it. It's in the amount of one thousand, two hundred and two dollars and forty-one cents.
Okay. I need a motion to approve the real estate tax exoneration from the, it's from office errors at the amount of a one thousand, two hundred and two dollars and forty-one cents.
No move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All favor say aye.
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 Good. Thank you. Uh, last thing I have would be an application for consolidation of, uh, three parcels that belong to James Brady. Uh, and they were in the Opeckin District, map fifteen B, parcel seventy-nine, sixty-nine, and sixty-eight. And he wanted to just put those together to get one tax bill. So I need your approval so we can get them put together for him.
Move to approve.
Second.
They're moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Uh, Larry, is that, is that the problem? Is that the property there around Blair Quarry?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, it's where the church, if you turn up that little side street, the church. So he's that first house on the corner.
Okay.
There he has three lots there.
Very good. Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ayes have it. Thank you.
Good. Thank you. Y'all have a good day.
Thank you. You too. Okay. Next up is, uh, board meeting reports. Commissioner Boyd.
Yes, sir. I've quite a few meetings since last week. Of course, you know, we were all in the meeting on Friday, um, Economic Development, the Governor, uh, thought that meeting went well. It was good presentation. Um, the Project All-Star that we talked about was main subject. I think it's a great thing. That's, um, possibility here. I did notice on Facebook today and yesterday that some people have picked it up and are discussing and then he's saying how we don't need this. So many people complaining that we're not advanced and we're not taking care of what we need to take care of, but I, I think that we're doing great things for this community and I think this would be a great project. And, uh, I don't think we can please everybody out there, but I think this is something that'd be great for our community, to be quite honest with you. Secondly, I had, and we had Monday, the County Commissioners Association Regional Meeting. Um, that meeting went well. You guys attended as well. Um, uh, it was good to see some counties and some commissioners who have not attended these things. Um, you know, we found it very useful for us and I think that it's good to see some new people participating there because the more heads in the room to, to discuss things, the better. Um, there was a Main Street meeting on Monday. Uh, it was quite a long meeting as well, two and a half hours. Um, they were talking about the, uh, new initiative and direction of, of Main Street for a five-year plan. Um, after a lot of talk and discussion, the moving forward, the, uh, main goals and priorities are going to be, um, promotion and, um, no, no, excuse me, perception and foot traffic. That's what we came down to. The perception of downtown is not the best. Um, lighting and some other things, uh, obviously need some improvement. The city has just passed a whole new lighting project that's getting ready to start soon, so that should help some things. Uh, we talked about encouraging them to do more lit signs and directions to where parking is at. Uh, you know, you go to a lot of other, uh, downtowns and, and places, they have signs that say public parking this way, not just a sign at the parking lot, to maybe direct people in those directions to understand that just around this corner, there's a whole parking lot and, and things of that nature. And then, um, also just try to pick up foot traffic. You know, there's a lot of, a lot of talk in perception that, you know, there's a lot of undesirables walking around town and that's why people don't go downtown and, and whatnot. But, uh, you know, with more foot traffic, uh, you, you get more desirable people, more, the less desirable people is, are noticed and they feel uncomfortable and kind of leave the room. So the hope and goal is to light up, beautify and get more traffic downtown. That's the five-year goal of Main Street moving forward. They did elect a new president. Mike McCullough will be the next president this year coming up. He works with Valley Health. Um, and, uh, that's that. CBB meeting was scheduled for yesterday, but then I guess they have moved it to next Wednesday, so I'll be attending that next Wednesday. Uh, museum board meeting is tonight. And then there was a Roundhouse Foundation meeting Tuesday night. Uh, we discussed the annual fundraiser. Um, sealing off the cupola and upstairs, the Bridge Machine Shop, so that when HVAC goes active, we're not losing all the heat out the roof. And, um, about an opening dedication event that we're going to try to put together for people to attend and really show off the facility. Uh, hopefully here somewhere close to the first of the year or something like that. Um, then the home show's coming up, uh, down there, the, uh, first weekend of April.
All right. Oh. Mr. Ian, your, your original conversation about the, uh, downtown Martinsburg, you know, the city has done a lot of work down there and trying to make those improvements. I know a couple of times throughout the year, I really paid attention to expect one stop at a stoplight to be able to just look. And like the summer with all the flowers and stuff that they had on their streetlights and stuff like that, that they maintain and they're, they're very carefully done, really makes a difference. And like right now, they'll be getting ready to do their, their Christmas tree lighting downtown again. So, you know, along with the additions that they've done at the intersections and, uh, Martin Street in particular, uh, they, they have made strides and it's still a challenge. But I, I have to give them a lot of credit.
Oh, yeah. And, and they're getting ready to redo all the streetlights too.
Yeah.
So there, there are definitely things coming down the pipe, but that's just kind of Main Street's goal to try to work closer with them to point out small things that could go to addition to what they're doing. But they have, they've, I mean, they've lit up the signs at the parking lots and things like that, but also even, uh, the use of, of, of video kiosks and things like that, that, that do indirect light, you know, and, and maybe lighting up some of the alleyways between buildings and things. Um, you know, because particularly there are people who work at different businesses who sometimes are scared to walk to their car at night because as soon as you get off the main avenue, some of these side streets aren't as well lit, you know, and, and that's where a lot of parking lots are. So, uh, just little things, but that, that's kind of what they put their goal and focus on and that's Main Street Initiative.
Yeah, and that, and that every, every city has their same challenges, whether in Hagerstown or Winchester.
Yeah.
I, I know for a fact.
But the city has done a great job. They, they really have.
Yep.
Right. Mr. Hardy.
Oh, thank you. This was a full week of meetings this week. I think everybody was really, really busy with some additional meetings this week. So, um, uh, started off with, uh, had a, a call-in roundtable meeting with the Speaker of the House and, uh, a few select, uh, House members and a few select senators, um, also some county commissioners for some, from some other areas of the state and also some, uh, city managers and mayors from municipalities talking about, um, uh, you know, there's a push in the legislature right now to try to figure out exactly, uh, how counties and municipalities can generate new funding. I think the, the legislature is starting to recognize that, um, if they're not going to give, um, local control or local ability to fund, uh, what counties and municipalities need to fund, such as fire police, EMS, and all the things that, uh, local government is, is in control of, um, then they're going to have to pay for it. So, uh, you know, if they don't give us the ability to do it. So it was a nice round table. I'd, I'd like to tell you that we broke a lot of new ground, but I, I, I don't believe that we did. I think we kind of beat the same old dead horse, if I'm being completely honest. But, you know, at least we had the conversation and hopefully it leads to more conversations and that's all we can ask for. So, uh, was, uh, appreciative to be invited to that roundtable and, and hopefully we can continue to garner support and at least continue to, uh, make the, uh, central control in Charleston, understand that, uh, local control and people being as close to the government as possible is the, always the best solution. They talk a good game, but they don't always execute. Um, uh, obviously I went to the WVCCA meeting on, uh, what, was that Monday? Monday, everything's kind of running together. On Monday, that was a great meeting. I was really excited to be a part of that. Uh, a lot of people from other counties showed up and, uh, I'll let Steve talk more about that, but I was, uh, very glad to be a part of that. I was very glad, uh, the amount of people that showed up, uh, Hampshire, Hardy, Grant, uh, a lot, a lot of different commissioners here that I.
Even Pendleton.
Yeah, people that I hadn't met before. So that was nice. Uh, I had my standing Monday, uh, Planning Commission meeting, um, standard Planning Commission meeting. We had a few, uh, one public hearing. I think we had one final plat, uh, but, uh, our county engineer Doug Smith, um, started talking a little bit about the new MS four permit. Uh, he has just got a hold of that and just started looking into it. Uh, he was able to give us a very brief overview of that, uh, but he's still, uh, making himself familiar with that. And there's things that he doesn't understand and he's still, uh, making calls and everybody's trying to get on the same page with that. So I look forward to, uh, him continuing to work on that and be able to, um, to give us more information on how exactly that's going to be implemented. Uh, also had a health board meeting, a Board of Health meeting, Berkeley and Morton County Board of Health meeting. Um, really basically touched about the standard stuff that we need to talk about. Uh, we did talk about the, uh, ongoing issues at, um, uh, Potomac, Potomac Park. Um, that's been an ongoing issue. Um, there's a few things that the Board of Health is asking the County Commission to provide for them and, uh, I forwarded that to the President and we'll get those things, hopefully get those to our legal and then we can get that stuff back to the Department of Health in whatever form or fashion that we feel comfortable getting that back to them, uh, to continue to work on that issue down there. So, uh, I think that was all my meetings and, uh, it was a, a pretty busy week.
Did you have a water board?
Uh, water board? Well, yeah, water board was last week. Did I, maybe, yeah, water board was last week. We, we, I think we talked about water board. Lot, a lot of stuff going on out there. Lot of new, uh, lot of new, um, meters, uh, the water tanks, water tank out on Ridge Road, water tank, water tanks, water tanks, water tanks. Um, talked a little bit about, uh, getting the water across the west side there at Taylor Station for the project that was discussed with the Governor. That's very exciting news. Uh, you know, I know we're a long ways from the finish line on that, but, uh, once again, it's, it's discussion and it's dialogue and we'll continue to try to make.
Well, those storage tanks, you know, will allow for additional pressure in some areas and also, you know, that when there is an issue, a problem with the service lines, that those tanks will provide the necessary water.
There's going to come a time where the plant's going to need to be shut down for maintenance or there could be an emergency shutdown and those will give us the, the pressure and the, the reserve of water that we, uh, that we need. So.
Thank you. Mr. Wood.
Yes, sir. Um, like you, I attended the, uh, gala down at the racetrack for the apple harvest. And one of the, uh, the grand marshal was Jessica Lynch. I don't know if that rings a bell with anybody, but she was the first female POW since World War One. She told her story. And if you ever hear her story, um, you will, uh, you will understand what our service personnel go through and our, and, and how our freedoms of our country are sometimes taken to granted. But anyway, it was well worth, uh, going to and also went on Sunday. She got more in-depth with her Sunday presentation, but, uh, then I had a, um, Transit Authority meeting on, on Monday. Uh, you see the progression that's gone on over here on the corner rally and race and they're, they're moving forward with it. Couple little hiccups with the, uh, uh, with the design and, um, the distribution of the, uh, of the stormwater, but they're, they're working through it. They're getting it done. And then my second meeting was the Airport Authority where we honored, um, Bill Walkup retiring again from the airport. So, um, he's not gone away completely. He's still, uh, going to be needed some with, um, uh, part-time help out there, uh, getting through some grant work and, and some projects that the, uh, that's coming up at the airport for the taxway expansion and, uh, the increased weight on that one. Um, the most important thing is trunk or treat out there. Remember to write the date down. It will be on, um, October the twenty-ninth from five to seven. And last year, there was about seven or eight hundred kids that participated. So, uh, if you're interested, be prepared because it's going to be busy. So that's all I had.
Very good. Thanks, sir. Mr. Cal.
Yes, sir. Of course, last Friday, uh, I also attended the Governor's Economic Summit here at, we hosted here in our building. Um, I want to, uh, thank the Governor tremendously for being here. He spent two and a half hours in that meeting. Uh, and I'll be honest, uh, there's a lot discussed. There was three counties, not just Berkeley, but Jefferson and Morgan. Um, and you know, at the end, he gave everybody in that room a chance to express themselves if they had something to say. So, um, I hope that we can have more of those and, uh, and what I'm hearing, there's going to be some real, uh, in-depth, uh, continued meetings about this particular project that was presented. So hopefully things will go well. The meeting on Monday that we hosted in our, uh, wonderful room over there again, was the, uh, regional meeting, Region Two meeting for the, uh, CCA, County Commission Association. It's the first time we've ever had such a meeting. There's eight counties in our region, uh, the three here in the Panhandle, Eastern Panhandle, and then you have, you have of course Mineral, Grant, Hardy, Hampshire, and Pendleton Counties. All eight counties were represented. Uh, out of the twenty-eight commissioners in those eight counties, nineteen were in attendance for that meeting. And I want to certainly thank, uh, Melanie Hilario.
Nailed it. Nailed it.
For being here, the Executive Director of this County Commission Association and, um, you know, I've had a lot of calls since then. Uh, Pasha called me last night, matter of fact, to talk about what a great meeting it was. Uh, we've already decided that it'll probably become a semi-annual event. We'll do one in the spring and then hopefully, uh, one in the fall again of next year. And everybody that was there, uh, and you mentioned the counties that have never, we've never met or participated, some people from Pendleton, uh, Grant, Hampshire. It was great to have those people there and, and getting their input. So, um, wonderful meeting. Um, even though we're all different, we all have, uh, needs and, uh, we're trying to work together as association to, uh, address those needs statewide and, and hopefully we'll get a little further in the legislature than we've gotten in the past and we get, we seem to get a little better each year, uh, getting step forward. So, on, uh, Tuesday evening, I had the Sewer Board meeting. Um, they're still, uh, monitoring the new treatment plan at the Woods and also the new renovated system over at, uh, Ecolab. And, uh, both of those so far are up to snuff. Uh, it's still going to take another month or so to be fully, uh, satisfied. There's been some tweaks that have been worked out, but both of those systems seem to be functioning the way they had hoped that it would. And then of course, following that meeting, we always have our Stormwater District Board meeting, uh, as well. Uh, we do have a hiccup there. Um, the MS four permit, uh, that we received, um, Eddie, Gary and myself were in Charleston a month ago and met with the, uh, Secretary of the DEP. We were told at that time that we would have a choice in whether to join the general permit or the, or, or have an individual stormwater permit, MS four permit. And the question was asked several times, will they be equal in terms of provisions and regulations? And we were told that it, they would be, but unfortunately when, uh, our attorneys reviewed that, they're, they're not. And so we're back now negotiating with them to see if it was just a mistake, uh, accidental mistake or if there was what the deal is. But, um, we certainly want to get it right. So whether that means going back and joining the general permit if need to, or continuing with this individual, we have to resolve these couple of issues first. So, um, on, uh, Wednesday morning, uh, Commissioner Goken and I were on WRNR and, uh, had some interesting conversation about the Governor's meeting in particular and about the regional meetings and other things. Uh, later on Wednesday, I had our senior service meeting. Uh, that was yesterday. Um, their fiscal year runs from October first to September thirtieth every year because they get a lot of federal money. So it's, so that, and I, I just, so they did a little over the last year, uh, number of congregant respite hours. respite hours, eleven thousand five hundred and thirty-eight. Number of in-home respite hours, six thousand two hundred and thirty-one. Transportation trips for medical appointments for seniors, ten thousand four hundred and sixty-nine. Trips to essential errands, nine hundred and forty-five. Meals, congregant meals provided at the senior center, eight thousand five hundred and thirty-two. Home-delivered meals last year, thirty-six thousand and eighteen. Uh, meals picked up at the senior center, uh, one thousand seven hundred and seventy-one. Uh, it goes on and on and um, I just can't say enough about the job that they'll be doing over there for our senior population in Berkeley County and, and I couldn't be more pleased. And we've got a really wonderful board there. That's the fundraising event that was held to Heroes Dinner, the second annual, just raised just under ten thousand dollars net on that, they reported. So, and then uh, this morning, uh, Eddie and uh, myself and Gary met with Judge, our monthly meeting with Judge McLaughlin and uh, Chief Burnett was there for a while. Um, and hopefully things seem to be going well with the judicial center and uh, court system. So, and then later this evening, I do have a ambulance authority meeting tonight by five o'clock here. So busy week.
Sounds like it.
All right. Um, and I also, uh, as Commissioner Woodick mentioned, I want to congratulate the Mountain State Apple Harvest Committee for their uh, another, another great week uh, of, of their events. It was very, very well done. Um, as, as everybody else has mentioned, the economic development uh, meeting that we had with the governor on Friday, uh, that, that meeting was at his request, uh, that we pull all three counties together to start discussing economic opportunities that we all may be able to share in. Uh, I, I give the governor a lot of, of credit for being able to uh, have that vision of bringing everybody together and we appreciate that. Uh, as, as everybody else mentioned, the County Commission Association meeting on Monday. Uh, I had a Parks and Rec meeting also, uh, only Oktoberfest, which is the first one that they've done. They had approximately uh, one thousand people out at Port House Farm Park uh, for that event. And the weather wasn't quite as nice as uh, most of us would have hoped for, but I, I believe that they could probably double that had the sun been shining. Um, and another thing, uh, which is be their second year or the uh, Christmas in the park at War Memorial. The, it will open up at November the twenty-fifth and go until um, January, I think it is until January fourth, I think. Joe is currently working, Joe Burton, the, the director is currently working with some uh, bank restoration on the Tuscaloosa out at Port House, uh, on the new property that was purchased. So that's, that's ongoing there. Uh, pool repair at War Memorial and Lambert. Uh, the city is helping with that expense and that contract was awarded to Viva Pool uh, for the amount of three hundred and twenty-three thousand eight hundred and six dollars. And that's uh, new liners uh, at uh, the different pools at War Memorial and at uh, Lambert. Uh, it's not the, the entire pool, but it's the, the separate little portions there. Um, uh, and, and a lot of that gets new plaster. I think they said they can only plaster over four times. Then it's going to come out and, and totally be redone. So, so that'd be nice. Uh, and we'll take care, take care of the leaking issues that they had, uh, some major leaks this past year. Uh, Steve mentioned, uh, we were on WRNR and most of that was uh, about Project All-Star. And I hope that everybody, you know, I know there's a lot of different comments out there about it, but also please understand that there is a feasibility study that's being done to make sure that it's a viable program and that it truly, it needs the assistance uh, of the governor's office and the West Virginia Legislature in order for it to be successful. So there's still a lot of work to be done there. Uh, Gary and I, I had Inwood Park meeting. Um, they were still doing some blasting up there on this, for the stormwater in uh, the parking lot uh, area and all the uh, topsoil, the stripping of the topsoil is now complete and they'll be starting uh, with their extension of the utility lines. So there's a lot going on and uh, it's all good. Mostly, mostly good anyway. Um, and we do have an honorary commissioner this week from St. Joe's School, uh, Elena Espinlaw. A good morning.
Mr. President, would you like to do the bid before you do that? You had one at ten o'clock.
Sure.
Yep.
Sure.
It didn't scroll down far enough. It's okay. HBAC maintenance. Uh, one thing to note, you do have certification publication. We delivered to known vendors of interest, but with this one, there was a mandatory pre-bid meeting to sup, and you had four uh, vendors show up to the pre-bid. It looks like you have three responses. This is for all of your building.
First bid is from Casto Technological Services, uh, Charleston, West Virginia, in the amount of eighty-seven thousand five hundred and seventy-six dollars. Next one is from Bowlin, Train Services out of Gaithersburg, Maryland, two hundred eight thousand eight hundred and forty-four dollars.
Little difference.
Hobbs and Associates out of Elk Ridge, Maryland, one hundred and twenty-nine thousand three hundred and sixty dollars.
Very good. All right. Next up is our honorary commissioner. All right. So Alana, if we can get you to stand up here in front of the flag. I'll get you all swarmed in. Right here. Can I get you your right, your right hand? All right. Let's look this way so they can get a good picture of us. Right. This is my, this is my good side. So you say, I state your name.
Alana Espinlaw.
Do swear or affirm.
Do swear or affirm.
That I will uphold the Constitution of the United States.
That I will uphold the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of West Virginia.
And the Constitution of the State of West Virginia.
That I will work hard to fulfill my responsibilities.
That I will work hard to fulfill my responsibilities.
Of the hon, of the Office of Honorary Commissioner.
Of the Office of Honorary Commissioner.
To which I have been appointed.
To which I have been appointed.
So help me God.
So help me God.
All right. Thank you very much. We got a little bit of people here for you. Thank you very much for being here today. If you want to tell us a little bit about yourself, um, where you go to school, what your hobbies are, what's your uh, what your plans for the future might be.
Um, I go to school at St. Joe's. I'm involved in student council and I'm the class president. I play volleyball and I play flag football up at Martinsburg. Um, I really like student council. I've learned a lot and right now we're learning, we're trying to get raise money for um, cancer awareness because it's October. So.
That's a worthy cause. That's wonderful. Thank you for that. So um, what do you think you might want to do when you grow up or where you, you have any idea where you might want to go to school at?
Um, I kind of, I'm not totally sure what school, but I really want to go into the army.
Oh.
So, or Navy. So that's definitely something I'm interested in.
Wow. That's, that's awesome. Well, I was in the army and it was a lot of fun. Anybody else have any questions?
No, just uh, I wear, I wear my pink tie every Thursday this month for recognition of, and awareness of breast cancer awareness. Thank you for your efforts there. It's really important. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you for being willing to come and uh, learn about us and sit here with us. And as the day progresses, as we get through our meeting, if you have any uh, input or anything you'd like to talk about, jump right in. Feel free to jump right in.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Yes, sir, Mr. President. So you do have certification of publication that was placed on your website, was also distributed to known vendors of interest. Uh, the commission, if you recall, approved an upgrade to your nine-one center and its CAD uh, system and phone system several months ago. This is just a natural progression of that project. Uh, looks like you've got seven responses.
Yeah. First bid is from Barry Solutions Group of Altoona, Pennsylvania, thirty-six thousand seventy-one dollars and four cents. Next bid is Government Goods Incorporated out of Brooklyn, New York, twenty-nine thousand nine hundred and twenty-one dollars and twenty-two cents.
Brooklyn.
Millie R Tech LLC out of Clarksburg, Maryland, thirteen, whoa, let's see, forty-two thousand eight hundred and forty-eight dollars.
This one sealed up by Fort Knox. He's working hard.
Forty-two, eight, forty-eight. sixty-six dollars and twenty-four cents.
Forty.
Southern Computer Warehouse Incorporated out of Marietta, Georgia, thirty-eight thousand six hundred and seventy-nine dollars and sixty-eight cents. Eighteen thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars. Now I'll have to dig a little bit out of Carrollton, Texas.
Ball, ball.
That's a praise. I did a hard one.
Not on there. That's in that booklet there.
While you're looking for that, Eddie, I've, I've been remiss if I didn't mention that the uh, honorary citizen was a good friend of the virus or Todd Butler.
Who was?
But he was uh, honored for the uh, apple harvest.
Honored West Virginia.
Honored West Virginia, yes.
Okay, here we go. Vernon Hills, Illinois, thirty-one thousand five hundred and sixty-six dollars and forty cents, CDWG. All right. Next up, Kristy Bentley, co-executive director for the Bethany House, recognition of employee. Good morning, Kristy. Welcome.
I'm here today on behalf of Community Networks and Bethany House Women Shelter for Women and Children. I'd like to take this time to honor someone whose service, leadership, and heart have shaped not only our organization, but the community for generations. For over forty years, this person has been at the very center of the Bethany House. She is loved with quiet strength, with compassion that knows no bounds, and with a steady commitment to the mission we hold so dear. This is nothing short of extraordinary. Her impact cannot be measured by time alone. It's measured in the women who found hope again because of her encouragement. It's in the children who found safety because she believed that they deserved better. It's in each of us here who have been lifted and inspired by her example. She is a leader, a mentor, an advocate, and a friend. And through it all, she has taught us what it means to lead with love. I'm reminded of words from the Dalai Lama, "The roots of all goodness lie in the soil of appreciation for goodness." Today, we pause to appreciate that goodness, the goodness she has planted in our shelter and throughout our community. She has sown seeds of safety, hope, and empowerment, and those seeds continue to grow in ways we cannot even begin to count. You are the heart of Bethany House and this community. Your leadership has inspired us all to reach higher and to do better and to never lose sight of why we are here. On behalf of Community Networks and on behalf of the countless lives you have led to stability over the last forty years, Bonnie Shaw, it is my pleasure to present you with this plaque of appreciation for just, as a daily reminder of just how deeply you are appreciated and how far your legacy will continue to reach. Will you all please join me in our applause for Bonnie?
Thank you so much.
You have touched so many lives in this community. You have led them to stability and it does not go unseen. So thank you for your commitment.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I appreciate you.
I'm talking about my best girl, Bonnie.
I'll go on there in a minute. Yeah, well, we've, we've had several meetings uh, with your organization over the last year or so, and I can tell you from everybody around the table, nothing gets done there unless it comes through you first.
Appreciate it.
Because you, you are part of the goodness of that organization and without that organization, this community would not be what it is. So thank you, and not only you, but even your colleagues for everything that you do in this community because we would, we would be in a very tight spot without you and your compassion and your love, not only, not only for the ladies that are there, but most of the children, just to show them the love and, and the, the good things in life. So thank you very much.
I'm very humble. Um, I took my work ethic from my dad. My dad was former Baystate. He worked at the Gateways Hotel for years and he said, I don't care if you sick, go to work. So I, I've worked um, on my life, never been unemployed. But of all the jobs I've had, this is one of the best jobs I've had is associate work at the Bethany House. So thank you all very much. It's truly an honor for me because I said, she don't want to be back to us. So thank you all so much. God bless you.
Yeah, thank you.
And it's God. I give the glory to God.
Amen. Thank you. All right. We'll go take a little break. We'll get a, a picture uh, with our commissioner and we'd like to get a picture with Bonnie before she gets out of this.
Bonnie.
Where's Bonnie? Where's Bonnie? Where's Bonnie?
All right, back in fashion. Next up, Chief Deputy of Staff, Eric Burnett.
Good morning, sir. How long was Chief Young?
Good morning, gentlemen, ma'am. Okay, so the RFP for our went out. Bid, bids came back. Two responses, lowest bid, Atlantic Tactical at a hundred and seventy-two thousand, seven hundred and seventy-one dollars and eighty cents. With that being said, they agreed to purchase our old rifles and our old handguns and some miscellaneous property that we have inside of the office.
To which the commission declared surplus.
Right, we did that two weeks ago.
And that's going to save us about seventy thousand dollars. So it's going to bring us to a cost, not to the taxpayers, of a hundred and two thousand, give or take. We plan on using forfeiture money. The forfeiture money that we, that we've received was from our local drug dealers. So our local drug dealers are going to be purchasing our rifles for us at no cost to the taxpayer.
I like that deal.
I do too.
So he's asking for the bid to be awarded to Atlantic Tactical in the amount of a hundred and seventy-two thousand, seven hundred and seventy-one dollars and eighty cents. Just heard the most.
No, I need a motion. I would make that motion to approve the purchase of those rifles.
Second? Moved in second, any further discussion?
Just to be a quick question, I know we talked, Eric, about the purchase and stuff. Did we not do the, the, did, did we take the suppressors off of that or the suppressors?
We're gonna have the suppressors on it.
On every one of them?
Yes, sir.
Even all the, even the road?
Yes, sir.
Road, road deputies?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Um, it, it was for so many SBRs and it was for, there was a couple SWAT.
Uh, yeah, so I think it's, uh, hang on, I do have that. You're talking about the suppressors, seventy-six. Seventy-six for the real guys, fourteen for the SWAT.
How much length do the suppressors add to the weapon?
They don't because they're using SBRs thing.
Yeah, you're the gun guy.
Yeah.
I'm not a gun guy. I think they're eleven and a half inch barrels.
Yeah.
Eleven and a half inch barrels.
Right.
Suppression's within the barrel?
No, it's a screw on it, it goes on the end. What's the cost of the suppressors? I don't care about the, I don't care about the ones for the.
Seven hundred and forty-eight dollars.
Each?
Each.
And there's how many of those? Seventy-six?
Seventy-six.
What's that number somebody?
Well, there's a seventy, there's seventy, uh, there's seventy-six. Actually, I mean, it's going to be the full amounts, it's going to be, someone do math for me, ninety? Ninety total weapons, so you're buying, you're buying silencers for, for all, so it's total, total of about ninety rifles. Ninety rifles, so ninety times seven, forty-eight, twenty-four is sixty-seven thousand, three hundred and forty-one paid for by your drug dealer.
So that's about fifty-six thousand, fifty, about fifty-seven thousand dollars for the suppressors.
No, sixty-seven thousand dollars for suppressors.
Well, I'm not talking about the ones for your reactionary team or your SWAT team or whatever you call it. I'm talking about for your road deputies.
Look at our deputies.
Seventy-six for road deputies.
Seventy-six times seven, forty-eight, sir.
Right, I got it, that's what it is. Fifty-seven, about fifty-seven thousand for, for your road deputies carry SBR suppressed.
Yes, sir.
Okay. I mean, I don't want to keep beliterating, be, beluding, and I just, I don't know if road deputies need to have suppressed vehicle, suppressed weaponry.
Well, let's.
I mean, let's talk about, let's talk about suppressor costs, seven hundred and forty-eight dollars. You guys don't have to pay the transfer stamp, you don't have to pay any of the transfer stuff, right? You're waived all that.
Uh, as far as I know.
Yeah, I don't think you guys, law enforcement doesn't have to pay any transfer and that kind of stuff, but, I mean, it's fifty-seven thousand dollars of drug seizure money. So I'm not going to sit here and beat a dead horse, I just don't know if road deputies need to have suppressed. You guys know your business better than I know your business.
That these guys should have, I mean, you know, camels are best. You don't want someone to have to use their vest, but they're there just in case that they do get shot.
Yeah, but it, but it's, right.
And we can.
But how do you justify the suppressor? Like, what, what, what makes the, what makes the deputy a better deputy because they're carrying a suppressed weapon?
He won't go deaf when he shoots it.
You're also going to have the crowd suppression issues when we had, like, if you take the February incident in Dawson's trailer park. And all the people that came created issues for on scene deputies trying to handle the scene. You're gonna, you're gonna reduce that significantly by the sound suppression.
Okay, that's all, thank you.
All right, need a motion to approve the bid of one recommendation for the patrol rifles.
Although we did, made that motion.
Oh, we had a question, okay. All in favor, say aye.
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 No.
Pose?
No.
As the record show, Commissioner Hardy voted no. Next up, discussion of Department of Homeland Security, twenty-two eighty-seven G and that deals with ICE.
Yes, sir. We are currently cooperating with, we are currently cooperating with Department of Homeland Security and their two-eighty-seven G program. By use of our deputies and their regular course of actions, they have significantly simplified the process when we run across an illegal alien in our duties. In doing so, they've offered us funding in their, in assisting them by apprehending these individuals throughout our core normal duties. There are several reimbursement options for equipment and time for our deputies that we can participate in along with our participation in the program. I'm asking the commission for their assistance with using the county's tax ID number and SAM's number, which is System for Award Management. The Berkeley County Sheriff's Office does not hold either of those, those are county numbers, county, the county is the taxpayer, the county is the recipient of the federal money. In order in order to get those, I need the county's assistance by allowing us to utilize the county SAM's number, account number, and federal tax ID number in order to sign up for those reimbursements toward the department.
I understand, you're already doing that work.
Yes, sir.
This is an opportunity to be reimbursed for time and your services through the federal government.
Yes.
Is that?
Time spent in dealing with the illegal. So I just sat through a teams meeting two days ago, and they are willing to reimburse us for our time. Whether it be straight time on their, on their shifts, or if they have to go and work any sort of time passenger shift, sort of time and a half. They're gonna pay all that back plus our benefits, because I want to get with you, this gets, because you're gonna pay us back for, for our time.
So is, is just, is this just for in Berkeley County?
Yes, yes.
And we will not be deployed in any other counties, any, any other properties throughout? Just for here?
Just for Berkeley County.
And I know that there are situations that your deputies run into, in particular, on the interstate, with folks traversing the major highway, that causes you a lot of serious issues.
Yes, sir, I can tell you that one of our, as far as the state police goes, they've been doing this throughout the entire state. And they had a press conference just a few days ago where the governor was praising the state police for picking up sixty illegals. I can tell you that we have one deputy in our department that's picked up at least twenty-five himself, so they are here. And it's just something that, you know, we are going to do, we're just, we're just trying to get back some of the monies to the county taxpayers, you know, that, that we can get.
All right. So for your own involvement, your discussion?
Yeah, I have, I have questions. Yeah, so my first question is, this will not involve any other jurisdiction, so you're not going to be on any special reactionary teams for some other jurisdiction in Washington County, Hagerstown, Maryland, Winchester, they're having a big ICE raid and they're pulling in Berkeley County deputy sheriffs out of our jurisdiction where we're already under numbered, don't have the state police help that we need, this is only going to be for Berkeley County's jurisdiction.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Secondly, what liabilities does this open this commission in this county up to? So in other words, you are the duly elected official. You gentlemen work for this gentleman, you guys are the sheriff's department. If you are involved with these ICE organizations and there's a wrongful death suit, a wrongful arrest suit, something happens, an American citizen is detained and, you know, things happen, things go, mistakes are happening, so.
Nothing you're doing is out of the ordinary for our every regular, everyday regular duty.
Right, so now you're, but you're working for the, the ICE fugitive organization, you're doing stuff for them. Something happens and now Berkeley County Deputy Sheriff is held liable for that. Does ICE take the, do they, is that become a federal?
There's an MOU that's been, that's here that, that waives all that from, from us to them, so.
Those liabilities don't fall back on this commission?
Not as far as that part goes, no, but I mean, as far as like a use of force or pursuit, that's still going to fall under us now. It's not like we're going out and picking people up. So let's say we do a traffic stop on somebody and think that they shouldn't be here. We actually make a phone call.
Right.
They give us the approval.
Right.
Once they give us the approval, then we take it, we take it to jail. They do all the paperwork.
Right.
It's all on that.
Yeah.
Try to find a way to get funding.
Yeah, and because my, and I'll be honest with you, because my concern is, listen, I don't want people here that shouldn't be here, people that's dangerous, people we're afraid of. People here that are drug dealers, people here that are not here for the right reasons, but I certainly don't think that Berkeley County Deputy Sheriff should be out on man-ons for people here or here illegally, but they're, 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 they're living a good life. They've got children here, they're working here. They're, they're a part of the community, and there's lots of those people here that have been here for a long time, twenty-five, thirty, forty years, but we have people here that are here. You know, this pendulum always swings, that's what happens. You know, the last administration opened up the floodgates and everybody poured through, right? No, no documentation on the who the hell's here, we don't know what they're here for, what they want to do. But, you know, now we, now the pendulum started to swing back the other way, and those people that came in that we want one here and we have no idea who they are and if they're doing bad things, yeah, we want them out of here, but if so, you know, it's, it's that same thing. You had someone that's been in the community for thirty-five years working and raising a family, but they're, they're, they're not a US citizen. Is that wrong? Yeah, that's wrong, but I don't want, I don't know if Berkeley County tax dollars should be used on trying to track those people down. You know, I mean, and, and maybe I'm pontificating too much here and, and maybe saying too much, but my thing is if we're trying to get ahold of people who we're afraid of and we're scared of and are doing bad things in our community, I don't have a problem with that. That's your all's job, that's not my job, that's, that's, that's what you guys do, but what, but my job is to do is to recognize the liabilities they can cause this county, this county commission, and our taxpayers. So that, that's what I'm trying to get to, is if something goes completely kaplooey and someone loses their life or someone gets injured, you know, can that fall back on this commission?
Yeah, so there is a way around it.
Okay.
I know the political you spoke to the political.
Right.
Part of this, and I have a letter here that back in January, the governor sent to every sheriff requesting that we work with our federal law enforcement partners. We are only enforcing, we take an oath to the state constitution, the United States constitution.
Yes, sir.
And we enforce federal state laws, just like any police agency does, it's happened all throughout the country. I've responded with another letter, I'll be glad to give you all copies of this, and pledged our support back in February before any of this program came out, so we were already cooperating with the federal authorities. I've worked with federal agencies my entire career, this is no different. If you want to look at the politi, there's going to be people that think this is, this is horrible. I can assure you, we're not going out looking for innocent people who's just trying to live their lives. But by the same token on that, if, if it's a crime, we are law enforcement, we don't make the laws. That's legislative, obviously, and if someone's deemed a criminal alien, then we're going to call ICE. And they make the call, we don't make the call. It's not our, that's why this, this MOU's in place. And that's, that was one of my concerns when I pledged our support, that we would be picking up people and we make the calls and then we get handed, like you said, the liability. I believe with this process, they're assuming all that, because when our deputies pick someone up, the call is made, we have the numbers, we have, and they make the call. We just transport them, they do the rest. We don't, we don't make those calls. I think, is that better?
Yeah, I get, my, my concern is if, if a Berkeley County Deputy Sheriff detained someone as through this ICE program. And listen, I understand what you guys are trying to do, and I, I don't disagree with it, I just, there, there's a, there's a, there's a fine line to walk. There's a fine line to walk, and with the liability side of it, which, which concerns me the most, you know, the moral, the moral side of it, I don't have a piece of that, right? That's, that's not what I'm here to do. I'm not here to make moral decisions, I'm here to make decisions on what's going to control liabilities and what puts kind of Berkeley County taxpayers at odds. So my thing is the liabilities if, you know, one of your deputies takes someone in one of these programs and they are a US citizen and something goes wrong, or there's a medical emergency and someone passes away. You know, how does that, how does that affect this commission and what we're responsible for? And what you're telling me is it's no other different than any other program that you work with. If you work with some other response or some federal agency or something else, it's all, it's still basically, it falls under the same criteria and, and, and Eric says there's an MOU, that there's a memorandum, a memorandum of understanding of how the operations will work.
And I would just submit to you that we're probably the one agency that, in the county that has, that deals with the most liability day to day.
I agree with that.
Everything we do has liability attached to it.
Yes, sir, I, I agree with that statement.
We believe we've taken every step in this to, like I said, I pledged our support back in February when the governor sent to every sheriff and, and I don't know what other sheriff, I haven't had a conversation with other sheriffs.
Right.
I know Jefferson County's participating.
Right.
Morgan County's participating.
Right.
And this was just the way, you know, every taxpayer in Berkeley County pays federal taxes. So we're going to be reimbursed for just the work we're doing. We're not taking on this, this, becoming ICE agents or going to Washington County, or, I'm not saying that, you know, you get in pursuit of somebody, it might, might go into
Right, right.
Jordan County, but we're not doing operations like that. So, you know, that, that's, that's our stance on it, and like I said, I pledged before this program came out that we were going to cooperate with ICE. We see this as an opportunity for the taxpayers not to bear the burden of when we're doing this. If we come across an illegal, we, we do the, we do the our job right, and we call ICE, they make the decision, we don't. If they tell us to cut them loose, cut them loose, and, you know. If they've committed a crime in West Virginia, why are we just going to charge them with that? And usually when we're dealing with them, they've committed some type of crime. Yeah, and, and, you know, we would expect that cooperation from the local, state, and federal partners that, that are out here doing that type of work. We would expect that cooperation and to, to turn that turn that blind eye to other agencies is a mistake. And we've seen that over a period of time, where they did not cooperate and something got missed and something really bad happened. So that cooperation is critically important to all of us, the security of all of us. So I, I would certainly support, you know, your thoughts and, and your your decision-making on participating with, with all of your federal, state, and local partners. As Commissioner Hardy questioned about the liability, I would, I would like to get something from Anthony, what's your, what's your thoughts on that?
So, can I read the MOU there? It, it doesn't completely I don't mean but it does provide a way that they could have apply for defense counsel. But we would still be liable for our activities. But that's with all law enforcement, the law enforcement's always working with federal agencies, state agencies, we could be sued, we have insurance. It, it's, that's just how it is. I mean, it's not they're now working for them and it's all their.
We, we're always going to assume that liability, I just wanted to make sure we weren't assuming liability for some other agency's actions.
We're not assuming liability for ICE's actions or anything. Now, there is state law that limits what local government can do topic, some, something like this. See, you couldn't have a policy saying, we're not going to ever engage in any two-eighty-seven anything like that. And of course, any law enforcement operations, sheriff's hall, he can go do that. They're just asking about accepting the money. Who doesn't want?
Thank you. Basically, you're already, you're already doing it, so just, our decision would be whether we accept money for doing it, and that, that's what it seems to me, and and obviously, any of our actions of our people are, we're not going to be liable for, obviously, but only problem that I would have if it went across state lines and we were just going over there because ICE asked us to come over there to do a raid or something, and I, I wouldn't want to see that outside the county whatsoever.
I, that's something I wouldn't, I wouldn't be for.
Right.
Also, but I'll, I'll be glad to give you copies of the letters I sent to the governor. Just, what are you, you got any questions?
No, I think it's pretty much a listening to everything. Just the concerns of liability, but I think, like Anthony mentioned, there's always going to be that issue. I know our world that you can get sued for anything, so.
Mr. Boyd?
No, sounds pretty cut and dry to me, get paid back for just doing your normal job.
No, it sounds pretty cut and dry to me. Get paid back for just doing your normal job.
I'd be curious as to, I mean, I, it'll come out sooner or later if the agreement is, uh, agreed upon about what it would generate in revenue. I'd be curious to, to understand that.
But, yeah, how, how many on average do you have a day or week that you pull someone over at a criminal activity and you, and you have to call them for their reference?
I think that's gonna be day to day. There may be a day, you're out on eighty-one, you stop a, a van and you got fifteen people. That's very possible. They go to a, a domestic and run across someone, um, and make that call and, you know, I know.
Do you, Rob, do y'all call them on every arrest or do you, or every time you turn, pull somebody over or do you, it's just your opinion whether you should call, or do you do it automatically, just call them and clear with them?
One thing we should mention is everyone participating in this has been through a training, uh, that, forty-hour training. So there's certain things that they look for.
International driver's license.
Those indicators are there. You simply call the number that we have and you put that in the hands of the ICE agent and they, they actually come out, correct? They come out, they will come out on certain circumstances or they'll, they'll, they will make the call. Yep, you have someone that we want, we take them to the regional jail, it's out of our hands at that point.
Because there are people here with visas and stuff, they're just visiting, right? They get into something that, they automatically getting taken away because they're here visiting and got in trouble or you don't know?
I, I have family members that are legal immigrants, it's, it's, they're the United States citizens now and that's, you know, we're not talking about legal. People here, we're talking about illegal.
Right.
And, and that's another good point Chief Young brought up. Um, this is voluntary in our agency, who wants to participate? Who wants to sign up for the training and, and, and so, and I don't, how many people we have? We have twenty that, twenty officers that signed up and that's, so, um, it's, it's something voluntary that we allow people, they wanna take the training and, uh, I'm certified with ICE to, to, to work with them. And they actually get a, a card that says they're, you know, agents or anything.
So, so what do your other, what do your other deputies do that chose not to?
They would call one of our officers or call the ICE people.
And why would they, Sheriff, why would they not participate in a training program?
Just as you guys have reservations for certain reasons, they have their own as well. Sheriff chooses to make it voluntary.
So it's not a policy of the sheriff's office that you want to do this?
Correct.
What do you mean?
It is, it's not a policy that the sheriff's office is going to put out to the deputies that you will be a part of this, uh, effort.
My policy is we will cooperate with ICE. The voluntary part is anyone wanting to take the training, it's a forty-hour course training. Uh, but we have twenty officers that are gonna be, uh, and even if someone's not trained, they can still make the call to the ICE, any police officer can make a call to these ICE guys, they're always available. And everyone in our agency knows that that is, is available to them.
You know, as, as my original, um, statement was, of, in particular about, uh, Interstate eighty-one, the different trafficking up and down the interstate between drugs and humans and, and I, and I, I know that this region, uh, is, does have gang activity. Uh, so when that type of activity, those type of activities can be identified and eradicated, uh, legally, then I, then this makes this a better place.
And I'll bring up one more thing, we all remember the, the body that was burned out on Cemetery Red. That individual had gang ties, that individual was living in our community. And I'm sure if you ask certain people in the community, they said he's a pretty good guy. It's not our job to determine who's, who's a good guy and who's, who's, who's a bad guy. If they're, if they're in this country illegally and ICE determines that they are going to deport them, that's their call, it's not mine. There is a program, I'll say this also, federal government has a program for anybody here illegally to self-deport, get paid for it and then come back in this country legally. They can get in line like everyone else. So, you know, this could be a political football we could kick around forever. I'm just choosing to enforce what we're sworn to enforce and, um.
Well, I mean, I think it's important to have this discussion. I mean, you know, I, I think it's healthy to have, have that discussion and, you know, it gets a different viewpoint so that, that perhaps we all understand everybody's position and responsibilities. What's, uh, what's the pleasure of the commission?
I, I think we're already doing it and we're already liable to begin with, so the liability issue is already there. It's a lot, it's not like, only thing I see, like I said, if we were, designate people to cross state lines and join in with raids in other areas other than Berkeley County, I, I'd have an issue. I'd have a problem with that. And Sheriff says that won't happen, I trust him to, to follow up on that and, uh, I mean, why not get reimbursed for something we're already doing? We're already liable for it anyway.
That's my take.
That your motion?
That's my motion.
I'll second that motion and properly moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your, uh, for your comment.
Next up, another all-star, Elizabeth Laptek, grants administrator. Good morning.
Good morning. Did you say a gold star?
All-star.
Oh, all-star.
With a gold star.
With a gold star.
That's all right.
Good, Liz.
Okay, so this is for the acceptance of the fiscal year twenty-five COPS hiring program award, uh, for Berkeley County Sheriff's Department. The total project cost is one million, two-hundred-and-ninety-four thousand, seven-hundred-and-thirty-five and the federal amount is six-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand with a local match of six-hundred-and-sixty-nine thousand, seven-hundred-and-thirty-five to fund five new deputy positions full-time. Over three years.
How many years?
Three.
Three.
Somebody said five and I thought.
Well, they give you five years, um, for the onboarding and hiring process.
But it'd be actually.
Ninety-three, thirty-six months.
It's covered under their three, first three years of service. Yep.
And what's the split?
Seventy-five, twenty-five.
Seventy-five, twenty-five. Well, that's good.
Cap at a hundred-and-twenty-five.
And that, that's the same for all three years, Elizabeth? All three years, it'll be that, that percentage?
Yes, it is capped at a hundred-and-twenty-five thousand per deputy, per year.
Sure. Still, that's a good seventy-five, twenty-five and, and, and it's not, it's not on a graduated schedule, it's the, the same. Yeah, okay.
Yeah, and that grant has changed a little bit over the year. At one time, it was a hundred percent grant for the entire time, but I guess the stuff changed, so does, so does the dollars involved. Um, you know, this commission and, and previous commissions that I have worked with and set with, you know, every, uh, commissioner has always felt that public safety has been our number one issue that we have tried to conquer and make sure that the, the public is protected and a safe community in which we live. And, you know, we, you just were very successful in the awarding of the twelve firefighter, uh, positions through the SAFER grant. And we continue to push for additional law enforcement, uh, all the time. And I appreciate your work in trying to get the staffing up to where they need. Not only to be able to serve the public, that, but to also to be safely, to be able to do their job. That's, that's inherited difficult job to start with. So I, I think that the more people that we can get on the street and we can share some of the financial burdens and pull some of those federal tax dollars back, it's, it's best for ever, everybody here, uh, that has paid into those dollars, so. Thank you. And, uh, thanks for the cooperation of the sheriff's office and providing her with the necessary information that she needed to be successful in this grant. And County Administrator Wyman for his assistance and support, uh, of this.
So, uh.
Mr. President, can I offer something?
Yes, please.
It's important for the commission to understand why you sit here and you look at a one-point-two-million-dollar expenditure, that it's not just that. On top of this is probably another six or seven-hundred thousand dollars. You have, you need five cruisers and those men right there need to outfit five police officers. So while they're handsome in those uniforms, they're pretty expensive too. So you're talking about one-point-two-million dollars in, in benefits, but the cost of doing that business, computers, office space, cars, guns, vests, all of that is not in that number. So you're really looking at closer to a two-million-dollar expenditure.
But, but insane that, starting November first, we're gonna be collecting impact fees and that can go towards the purchase of these vehicles and their equipment. Um, and I think that's gonna help us, I really do.
Yeah, as, as we expand those services, it's my understanding that impact fees can help with that equipment.
Absolutely.
I just want to take a minute to, to, to thank Liz. I mean, I don't know if people realize how competitive these grants are. I mean, you know, we've been very blessed to get one for, uh, our firefighters and then the SAFER grant for our cops. I mean, these, these, these are very competitive and there's lots of communities, uh, that are out there scrapping and trying to, to get these things. And so I just appreciate you and your, um, willingness and, and, and your, uh, abilities to go after and make these things happen. And it takes the whole staff to do that. Just want to thank the staff and thank Liz and, and, uh, the sheriff will get to buy some, some new cruisers and some new equipment and, and get some, some new people on the street hopefully. Or, or maybe we'll pilfer somebody from someplace else, like it seems to happen in, in this line of work. It's a, it's a, it's a tough, tough industry to hire people in, so, and we, but we appreciate your hard work and the staff's hard work to, to bring these new deputies on board, so exciting times.
Gary, I think I know the question, uh, because it would have been asked or at least decided upon when the grant was applied for, that at the end of that three-year, that we are in a position, uh, financial position to assume those additional, uh, five deputies.
You, so your natural growth of your budget historically, you have just consumed your natural growth with five deputies and non-police officers in the next three years. So yes, sir, you'll be able to support them, but we're planning and appropriate accordingly, but.
I understand, thank you. Okay. You have also have anything?
Need a motion to, uh, accept the grant award.
So moved.
Then properly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll have, thank you.
Thank you, Liz.
Next up, Anthony DeLaGuetti, Legal Director, noise ordinance update.
So, a month or so ago, we had, um, potential developer just asking some questions about, um, backup generators. Noise ordinance. Uh, we took a look at the noise ordinance, um, and what this does is, what's before you is, it adds that exception, so standby generators, the use of them for their, during a, an electricity outage or a, for their maintenance or testing would not just be another exception to the ordinance. It also goes through and just cleans up some of the language and ambiguity in there. And what you're left with is, there's a whole lot of exceptions and different things you can do during the day versus night. But it's, it's a judgment call on the, on the, uh, responding officer to determine whether it's, uh, violated the peace and quietude of a nearby residential area and then to direct them to, to stop the noise. And then if somebody continues after being directed by law enforcement, then that opens up a misdemeanor offense where they can be charged. It, it's, it's a little bit simpler. The ordinance had some things in there about decibels. Now, certainly still use that as evidence, recording, using a decibel meter. I think the sheriff's office has some of those, but you have any other questions?
But I think if I remember correctly, the original request was perhaps to do a waiver. Instead of the waiver, you just go ahead and kind of address broadly in the ordinance itself.
Yeah, I mean, the, somebody calls the sheriff's office and says, hey, there's a generator on and it's annoying me and, and there's a power outage. They're not gonna send somebody out there anyway. We had an exception in there for emergencies, but is that an emergency? It wasn't explicit, so this just kind of clears that up.
There, there was a question that was posed to me that somebody had their electricity turned off and they went through and rewired their generator just because they didn't pay their bill. That's, is that?
So that would not be an exception. This is during a power outage. So if you've decided to go off-grid and run your house with a decent generator and you got a neighbor right beside you, that would.
Definitely appealed this.
Be a, a violation of the ordinance.
Okay. That was a fair question.
You have anything for Anthony?
It makes sense to me. If you need a motion, I'd be glad to make that motion to change the ordinance as, as presented.
Second.
It's been motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Let's have it. Thank you, sir. Next up, Chad Wyman, Brenner Deputy County Administrator, impact fee ordinance revision.
Good, almost afternoon. So, uh, as you all know, after our initial adoption of the impact fee ordinance, we went back and had to do some recalculations to include the city of Martinsburg as well as some amenities, uh, as it pertained to Parks and Recreation. Um, with those calculations, we have to do a minor revision to the county administration fee of your ordinance. Um, with adding the population, uh, the city of Martinsburg, it changed the modifiers to what the max fee Tisher Vice is suggesting be assessed. So for single-family, the initial, uh, was a thousand twelve, that has reduced down to eight-hundred-and-seventy-four. Uh, for multi-family, it was seven-nineteen, which is reduced to six-hundred-and-twenty-one. And for mobile home, the original was seven-ninety-five, which reduced to six-eighty-six. Um, all in all, for the single-family, it's a reduction of the total fee by a hundred-and-thirty-eight dollars. For the multi-family, it's a reduction of the fee by ninety-eight dollars. And for a mobile home, it's a reduction of the fee by a hundred-and-nine dollars. Also included in your packet, um, is a extremely long document, but it is the final technical report that Tisher Vice has provided you upon completion of their impact fee study, which has been, uh, reviewed by your legal team.
All right. Anyone have any question for Chad?
Been a long time coming.
We're ready.
Yeah, good deal. Thank you for your work on that.
Um, so the Parks and Rec went up though to two-thousand-ninety-nine.
Yeah, the Parks and Rec, the maximum did go up because of the added capacity of the amenities.
Of the city, um, and the Board of Ed stayed the same, I think.
That was on the Tisher Vice recommendation.
Yeah, that was his recommendation. Yep.
So because you're not increasing a fee, you don't have to do the wait period.
Only thing being reduced is the admin part of it.
So if you're changing, if you're increasing a fee, then it's not.
So we were at fifty-five-hundred, we're gonna be at fifty-five-hundred minus one-thirty-eight.
Fifty-three, sixty-two will be your single.
Mm-hmm. And that's for a single family, obviously, so, yeah.
All right. Any further questions?
It still takes effect number one.
Ron, you ready for that?
Ready or not, here it comes. Ready or not, here it comes.
I need a motion to approve and amend the ordinance.
So moved. I'll second that, Mr. President.
I've been properly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll have, thank you.
That's gonna conclude our business. We do have need for executive session. Are there any other items from the public? But the record shows there are no items from the public. Need a motion for executive session.
For real estate.
For real estate.
Motion for real estate and executive session.
So moved.
Yep.
We're back in session. There will be no action taken. Need a motion or recess?
Mr. President, I move that we recess.
We are in recess.